Section 11, Self-Page Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM in G.I.R. Hall, Lower Level Town Hall, 41 Elm Street, Southbridge, Mass. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment and consider amendments to the Southbridge zoning bylaws, adding a new definition in Article 3, Definitions, Section 300.541, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, adding Article 5, Section 502.35, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, and allowing such use with a special permit in general business, light industrial, heavy industrial zoning districts, and adding Article 19, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. A copy of the proposed amendment may be inspected at the town's clerk's office during normal business hours. This notice is also published electronically on www.telgram.com and on www.massmypublicationsnotices.com. Any person interested or wishing to be heard, an application should appear at the time and place designated. David Payer, Chairman of the Southbridge Planning Board. Anybody who is in attendance, please make sure you sign in. We have one comment from Chief Woodson. "I reviewed the amendment and believe it works for this community. As we discussed after the last staff meeting, so long as there are regulations prohibiting the distance from schools, et cetera, I do not think there will be any issues. I also believe this is similar to what other communities have done, and it has worked for them. If you need anything else, please let me know." Shane Woodson. That's the only comment we received. So I'll hand it over to our planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin, any of the documents that the planning board has reviewed over time can be found on our website in the Planning Board section. You can find that under Development Projects and Zoning Initiatives, and from there, if you click that link, you can find all of the files and the comments and the maps that the planning board is currently reviewing and the town council has reviewed to this point on that link. So just for the public's awareness for that. To begin, as you know, Board, we have been working on medical marijuana and registered marijuana dispensary bylaws for our zoning bylaws, and from that, we came up with -- the planning -- the town council has sent back to the planning board to receive for a public comment that set of zoning bylaw amendments that were posted to the website. It is six pages long, and that can be found at the website. But I think to that effect, there have been some comments made by various members of the public and the town council in regards to some of the conditions of the permitting process for registered marijuana and -- sorry, medical marijuana and registered marijuana And I think that this particular process will allow us to -- or allow the Board to come up with a set of bylaws that can be sent back to the town council for approval. Any zoning bylaw amendment needs two-thirds of the town council, so please be mindful of that. The planning board, at the end of our public hearing, will provide a report to the town council that will basically lay out the proceedings that have happened thus far. We -- the chair and I have discussed having this public hearing process last more than one planning board meeting, so assuming we will probably look to continue this item at 8:00, if we have not yet finished discussing the item, and continue it to our following planning board meeting on the 16th of May. So to dive into the zoning bylaw amendments, the bylaw amendments were drafted with the assistance of the Board to provide for placement of registered marijuana dispensaries, as they are authorized under state law, in suitable locations, minimizing any adverse impacts on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, schools, playgrounds, and other areas where children commonly congregate, and other areas incompatible with such uses. The bylaw also seeks to locate RMDs where they may be readily monitored by law enforcement for health and public safety purposes. This particular bylaw was drafted with a likening to the adult uses bylaw that the town council adopted. Likening in that the buffers were created with those numbers in mind, so -- and we'll get to the discussion of locational requirements, either towards the end of this particular discussion or at the next continued hearing item. But we are, at least for this opening of this public hearing, discussing the permitting issues and requirements that an application should provide when a medical dispensary, medical marijuana dispensary were to want to file to build in our town. With that said, there are some application requirements that no RMD shall commence operations with first applying for and receiving site plan approval and the grant of a special permit from the planning board. As I mentioned in previous discussions before sending this off through town council to begin this process, we were looking at bylaws that were adopted by town meeting for the town of Auburn and the town of Grafton. So many of those particular articles are listed here and are for consideration for both the planning board and the town council. Since those particular application requirements and deciding standards that are presented are, for the most part, for the most part, it would be likened to what the words on their bylaws look like, with the understanding that we are first opening this public hearing process with the amendment that was sent to the planning board with a 700-foot buffer to any school, daycare, any place where children commonly congregate. Also, with that said, at this point, what was presented to town council was that no RMDs to be located within 500 feet of any residential zoning district, residential structure, or any non-conforming residential structures in non-residential districts. And that was presented to the planning board. I believe that more than likely, what is going to come out of the planning board will be a discussion of those locational requirements, as talking to other towns that have adopted marijuana bylaw, registered marijuana dispensary bylaws, and medical marijuana bylaws, zoning bylaws, the buffer seems to be the point of contention. But I wanted to see if it's possible that, at least for the first sections, as we have posted on the agenda, if there were any comments from this board or from the public that discuss the purpose, applicability, definitions, and application requirements, and then probably go from there.
Do the Board have any questions? I'll settle here. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? State your name and --
I actually don't have -- my concerns are actually -- oh, Gus Steve, 771 Lebanon Hill. I'm on the council, but I'm not speaking as a counselor, but as a citizen. My actual concerns aren't in the first sections, they're actually in the site restriction section primarily, which is Section 1903.2. And that is -- is that from this mic? There's a few things here. Under Section A, you mentioned that an RMD, with or without cultivation, cannot be within a mile of any other RMD, and I see that as being really, really restrictive, especially given the geography of the map that you guys showed at the Planning and Development Subcommittee, and the way those parcels, the way that the sections that you set up on that map as being the areas that such facilities can locate, A, many of them don't have any roads, and the places that do have roads are relatively small in such a way that you could not -- in some of these cases, I don't think you could even have one of them, given the size of the lots that the spaces these would require. I am concerned about the fact that this is -- this restriction is not something we see on businesses that are very similar, and I think these things should be seen as facilities that are more like pharmacies rather than adult entertainment sites, because they're not entertainment, they're medical. And we have two pharmacies within sight of each other right here on Main Street. You know, with -- and I think there's plenty of evidence to show that some of the medicines that those kinds of facilities sell are actually more dangerous than the stuff that a dispensary would be selling. Also, I would like to point out that I think that this kind of restriction is really non-competitive. You guys have frequently mentioned that you want to try to promote business in town, and that has frequently been an issue for several boards in our community, including the council. But this, to me, seems like it would end up being extremely non-competitive. If you can only have one in town, that essentially is creating a monopoly. That's not good for the community as a whole. And also, let's see, I would like to point out that under Section 1903.2B, you mentioned here, blah, 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 "The facilities shall not be located within 700 feet of a bunch of different facilities, as mentioned, in straight line from the building and/or the area actively used." And I've got two concerns about that. One is the 700 feet seems completely arbitrary. I know that state law states 500, and I know that the law also allows it to be more restrictive. But I think in our case, given the fact that our town needs so much more development and already has a hospital in town where people may -- while the hospital doesn't necessarily have to have anything to do with this, and I understand if they don't, I think that the people who need the services should be able to find it much more easily than these kinds of restrictions would allow them to do. And the second section is "and/or actively used," I'm -- what exactly does that mean? Because the way that MGL is stated in Mass. General Law, it says the edge of the facility. It doesn't even say the edge of the property, it says the edge of the facility. And the way I would read that would be the building itself. Because the way that when you have it as actively used, that's a rather vague term that could basically mean any how active, how often? You know, if it's a facility, like for example, would Coal Forest be considered actively used because somebody hikes it every once in a while? Something like that. So that seems to be too vague. If you jump down to Section C, under this particular section, where you mentioned no RMD is to be located within 500 feet of any residential zoning district, again, that falls into, as far as I would say, falls into the too restrictive category. 100 feet, maybe, but I don't see us having these kinds of restrictions for similar kinds of facilities in any other -- let me rephrase it, in any other similar kind of facility. We're not talking a giant industrial plant here. We're talking a facility that sells, basically, food with marijuana in it most of the time. And, you know, and if they're growing it, it's in a locked building, nobody's getting into it, they're very secure. As I mentioned at the P&amp;D meeting, these facilities are much more secure, I think, than even banks. I've seen some of the requirements that Auburn, one of the facilities in Auburn was looking at doing, and they're ridiculously strict. Let's see, also, I'd like to see here, you mentioned the hours of, they cannot be open between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM. That seems to also be rather restrictive. I have no problem with something like 10:00 PM. And also, I think that if we could figure out some way so that even with the 500-foot requirement from schools and similar facilities, if we could figure out some way to promote the reuse of vacant properties in town wherever possible, because there are so many vacant ones, and so many of these facilities that could easily be reused, something like this could be an ideal thing to reuse, some of these old mill buildings. If we could figure out some way to maybe tweak it, as Ken mentioned a few minutes ago, the distance restrictions are being challenged, so maybe even 500 feet will prove to be too much. And I think that maybe we should set it up so that we'd be a test case and see what happens. Maybe the state will end up supporting us if we're lower than that over the long term. Oh, and also, let's see, you mentioned here that about that your goal, one of your goals is to make it be readily monitored by law enforcement, and we've given the map that you guys are promoting at this point, I don't see how it's easy to monitor them on the edges of town and/or in places where there are no roads, which is what a lot of the land that is currently proposed to be zoned for these kinds of facilities would essentially be. And the last comment I have is that the way you've got it set up on your Table of Use Regulations, the zones that you have it in, you say that you can do special permit in general business, but from when I was looking at the way the zoning map is set up, essentially that is a no, because of the distance requirements and a variety of other things. So it would be nice to see if we can figure out some ways to put it in some of these other business zones as well, not just the industrial zones that force it onto the edge of town, which makes it harder for people to get to. Thank you for your time and the work you've done.
Thank you.
Hello. Dimitri Casperson, 51 North Street. I had a question for the Board, or maybe for the planner, as I'm curious why you looked at Auburn and Grafton as models.
Auburn, it's interesting. Counselor Steve's add, yeah, that was sent to me when we were discussing the recreational marijuana bylaw, the recreational marijuana establishments bylaw. But in the discussion of establishing medical marijuana zoning bylaws, that was presented to me. So looking at that and talking with their town planner and their process of how they came to those numbers, it was just something that I think was a good stepping stone for the Board, at least to look at. As I mentioned, town of Grafton, we're looking at surrounding towns. I didn't necessarily want to go out to Eastern Mass, because I have looked at some of their regulations and some of their amendments to the zoning bylaw that showed, that provided those regulations. And I think, in general, the planning board probably would like to model any, because this is new for everyone, model bylaws that were able to pass legal muster through the Attorney General's office, which these did as they were adopted by their town meeting and prior to getting on the town warrant, getting approved by the Attorney General. So, I mean, those were the two, just based on general locations being close to Southbridge, that we just kind of took and at least got started with this process.
Okay. I would, just from the outside looking in, you know, I'm just coming into this, but it seems to me it would be a better idea to maybe look at towns that we aspire to be like, that have a similar geographical and physical makeup. You know, it seems like both Grafton and Auburn are strip mall, sort of, you know, have large developed areas, very different than Southbridge. It seems to me you should be looking at like a town that we're aspiring to be, like Northampton. And I don't know what they're doing, but they have a similar type of Main Street setup. We hear constantly how it would be great if Southbridge could get more like a town like that, and I don't know if they're imposing restrictions, but if they're not, then I think you should consider that as well. Second thing, you know, echoing what Gus Steve said earlier, is it's hard for me to understand why you would be doing this with an approved, something that overwhelmingly was approved at the state level, when you have things like cigarettes, alcohol, and other things being sold, or, as was mentioned, you know, CVS, Brooks, where cough syrup and other things that children abuse on a regular basis are available, and you seem to be creating a much more draconian system for dealing with the marijuana issue. And I'm not sure why that would be. I mean, is, do you guys have an answer for why you would be more restrictive with that than?
I can give, can I answer that? I would give the answer that we operate, basically, on trying to come up with bylaws to fit the laws that are in place at the time. So although it was overwhelmingly passed at the state level, fortunately or unfortunately, as some people might see it, we did have a second referendum vote in June of 2017. And it was then changed for us specifically, as in Southbridge said, "No, we're going to ban it." So what we're trying to do by passing the bylaw is just try to say, "Okay, this is reality as it is right now. This is what the law is right now. So let's put a bylaw in place that protects and fits what we have to work with as far as what this current law is right now." Doesn't mean that individuals on the Board agree or disagree. In fact, many people I know disagree, and some people agree, but it's irrelevant when we're looking at trying to implement and execute something to be compliant with the current state of law. And that's really why we're trying to write a bylaw, is to say, "If this is reality and Southbridge has decided as a town to ban it through that vote, then we need to come up with a bylaw to just ensure that it's reflected in our zoning laws. Otherwise, if someone comes in and tries to file an application for a dispensary or something, we don't have anything at all, and it would be very hard to impose any kind of zoning restriction on them because we have no guidelines."
Wouldn't you still have just a basic special permit process that would go forward?
No. He's shaking his head.
If it isn't listed in the bylaws, it's not allowed.
We cannot ban a medical dispensary.
Right.
Right, but there wouldn't be, we would have absolutely no way to kind of regulate what might go into play in making sure that they're putting in a business that, you know, makes sense and follows different rules and ordinances that we have for other things in town. So it would be, it would be a big question mark. We know we can't ban it, but it would be challenging to kind of try to get them to follow any kind of roadmap to what we thought they should look like if there aren't corresponding bylaws that --
Wasn't there, when the methadone clinic went in into Main Street, which went into an area, you know, directly adjacent to children activities?
Oh, that's the, it's a totally different, what is it, Dover Amendment?
Dover, yeah.
Yeah, which we have no ability to dictate to them because they're an educational program, so therefore they can go anywhere they want. They're treated that way.
There was no special permit process for that either?
No.
Like a church.
Yeah, like a church, yeah. Can't, yeah.
No restrictions.
Well, there, I mean, you always have some control of restrictions for parking and other things like that, that you can --
No.
The only restriction as, that I posted on the website, it is something that came down from the state in regards of how to look and kind of an instructional guide for towns, should they want to adopt zoning bylaws. This particular memo states that without any zoning bylaw, the only citing requirement is that the default buffer zone will be 500-foot distance described in the regulations, which is 500 feet from a school, daycare, or any facility in which children commonly congregate. That would be the only thing that the town, probably the zoning enforcement officer, would need to look at a permit that would come in to him or myself and basically measure where this proposed facility is going to be in relation to a school, daycare, anywhere where children commonly congregate. That would be the only control that the town would have. The zoning enforcement officer would then probably just sign off on that approval, stating that it's not within 500 feet. The planning board wouldn't touch it. It would be just the zoning enforcement officer and the building permit that would need to be adhered to, along with the regulations that the state provides through the Department of Public Health.
So if a religious organization were to open, want to open one of these facilities, would you be able to restrict that?
That would be difficult.
Yeah.
That would be a question that --
I mean, you have entire religions, you know, like the Rastafarian religion, based on that. I mean, would they just be able to use the same?
It would be, it would have to be probably a registered type of religious --
Yeah, the bylaws require a nonprofit, which, you know, a religious use probably would be a nonprofit, but then by that time, the Department of Public Health would probably have some sort of involvement in making sure that this could be permitted through their process. The town, again, I think it would be, the only thing that the town would have a say in is confirming that it's 500 feet from a school, daycare, any structure where children commonly congregate.
By, if I may, by putting this process, applicant coming in for a special permit, it gives the planning board the ability to look at the abutting neighborhood, look at the impacts of traffic. I mean, if you put in a facility and there's no off-street parking, and it's already a parking issue on the road, we can look at that, the different aspects, and try to work with the applicant to come up with a solution. But if there's no solution, it gives the town and the planning board the ability to review each application individually versus a blanket sign-off from the building inspector. And that's what the special permit process will do, be able to look at each individual site location and the merits of it and the downfalls of it. And that's all the planning board is charged to do, is to look, listen, public hearing process, to the neighborhood, to the site characteristics, the site topography, the traffic, and environmental issues. And that's what the planning board's charged to do, is to look at as part of the special hearing permit process. That's why we want to try to, at least, we want to put the special permit process in place versus a blanket sign-off from the building inspector.
Okay.
It's more protections for every sector of town, the commercial sector, the residential sector, the industrial sector. Each section of town has its own characteristics, and that's why the special permit process has a public hearing that we can hear from that area, if there is an application, of what the characteristics of that would affect that neighborhood.
Okay. I just like, my last point is just that I think you should consider that this is looking to be a huge new business opportunity for the state of Massachusetts with enormous economic impacts. We're a town that's been struggling for a long time. It seems to me that if you can put a special permit process in place and eliminate as many of these additional things that it appears that you're adding in that will make it harder for a business to come in of this nature, and as long as you still have that special permit process in place where it can be discussed and there's some level of control, I think you should, you know, reexamine, you know, more restrictive buffer zones and setbacks and whatever else, things like that. Seems to me like you should open the doors for business in this town, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristin O'Clara, 51 North Street. I am on the town council, but I'm speaking tonight as a citizen. You know, I was going to echo a lot of the remarks that Counselor, Mr. Steve's has said with the 700-foot buffer being more of an arbitrary figure than anything, also the one mile apart between facilities -- Also, the one mile apart between facilities is also extremely restrictive. Since he's, you know, kind of said all of that, I just want to point out that the referendum in 2017, in June, was for recreational marijuana. This before you tonight, that will eventually go up to council, is for medicinal facilities. There's a very big difference, especially for, you know, people going into the facility. In a medical facility, you cannot enter without a medical card. These are things that you have to apply for and, you know, pay a certain amount of money. In a recreational facility, anybody can walk in. So I think that there's a huge difference between the two things, and I think that that needs to be said. Also, with the Dover Amendment, which was brought up, the Dover Amendment still has to adhere by certain zoning regulations, specifically parking, and that is because you can't have places assembly that overload certain parts of town. And that's, that's another thing that I think needed to be said. The modeling after the adult entertainment industry, I think, is wrong. I think it's extremely restrictive, and I think that any kind of new businesses that may be coming into Southbridge, we should be entirely supportive of. You know, this town has a reputation for being anti-business, and this is just a further, this is just a further extension of that. There are, I believe, four different areas in town that actually have road access on the zoning map that is proposed by the planning board. I believe that that is a mistake. I think that most of the Central Core District would be eliminated just by the state's ruling of the 500-foot buffer. I would be, you know, I would much rather see the planning board maybe make some restrictions in the Central Core because that is a concern of a lot of residents, but as far as restricting it to the amount that you have, I do not, I, I don't think that this is right. As has been mentioned tonight, you have pharmacies, you have methadone clinics, you have all of these different places right in the center of town that have extremely more lethal and addictive substances, specifically opioids with the pharmacies, with the methadone clinic. And medical marijuana facilities are specifically for patients who are looking for alternatives to addictive medications. That needs to be taken into consideration. I hope that, you know, the planning board does the right thing, releases some of the restrictions on it. Like I said, I think that, you know, taking it out of the Central Core District and then taking it with a 500-foot buffer to, you know, make sure that it isn't within different schools or churches or congregations of children, I think that that's sufficient enough. So I thank you for your time.
Hello. My bad there. Hello, I'm just so far off 138 Mechanic Street, let's just, hopefully I can talk straight today. Now, I, now I was, I'm listening, and this is my first, to be honest, my first meeting to one of these planning things. Sorry if I can't find the proper words, but one thing I, that clicked in my mind too is, as, as Dimitri and everyone was talking, one thing that clicked in my mind is there's, I've noticed, at least in my opinion, I don't know about a lot of the outskirts area and stuff, because obviously that's too far for me to walk, and probably I'll be trespassing, is the question, my thing is because I've actually know for a fact, there are very few, if any, businesses that are primarily based in Southbridge. Now you have, now, for example, I'm not saying there aren't any businesses in Southbridge, but there, but there, but I'm excluding all the chain businesses that have moved into Southbridge with that, within a certain amount of years. But one thing, so I just want to throw that out because I've even known a business to close down in Southbridge for greener pastures in the south. So, so it's, that kind of like puts like a damper on some things, probably economically, I don't know how, but, but one of the things I want to point out too is the fact that I do, because I kind of like echoing Kristen's concern about everything, is it, it does have a ring to me that everyone's thinking this is gonna be like a thing you can get to, you know, have a good time, party, party, party kind of deal, and pretty much, and pretty much think you can enjoy it while watching support or something. And that's one thing though, is more, that's one thing though, is I don't know if that is a thing, or maybe it's just a faulty registration on my part, because trust me, I can't keep things straight sometimes. So, but one thing I just want to echo is because I, I know about both sides of the thing about marijuana in general. There's the side of who wants to use it recreationally, which I know personally, me, I understand about some people not wanting that, but medical marijuana is one thing I've understood is this is, it is very, it has two fundamental, marijuana in general has two fundamental chemicals at least that I know of. And as we all know, there's THC and CBD. Now that, now that, they are both chemicals typically found whether it's recreational or medicinal. However, the medical marijuana, I've even did some research into it where you can even breed certain crops of marijuana so that it's a higher CBD, which most of that is, which is pretty much all the medicinal purposes for the most part. Now, the thing is, because I keep hearing, one thing I keep hearing is facility, 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 and I'm not sure of meaning like, say, having a growing facility or something like that, because that's one thing that keeps popping in my head is facility, whether you guys mean as like a bit, where to place the dispensaries, because I mean, to be, if I'm not mistaken, a dispensary, unless I'm mistaken, of course, mind you, is more of, you know, okay, you give information that is required, you give a card, and voila, you can typically get it, typically get it, and, and I know for one thing, I know for one thing, I've even heard stories about people who never touched marijuana in their life, never have. This friend of mine I lost contact with years ago had actually said how, you know, just, just because, yeah, it, it was illegal to have marijuana and stuff, but he introduced it to a cancer patient who was going through chemo, and it actually alleviated a lot of her pain. I, I have also another friend who uses it to go to sleep at night because if she doesn't, she either, she can't sleep, she's in, she pretty much will be an insomniac, and it's actually a medical fact that over time, you, your body degrades, you're mentally, physically, everything degrades to the point of death, literally. And the only thing that, and the only thing is, is the name of the drug is, just ran away from me, so I apologize if I can't say off the top of my head, but the, but she can't take this particular medication anymore because she's been on it for so many years. And mind you, this is a narcotic-level medication prescribed by doctors, and it is also known to be habit-forming and possibly, I'm sure, addictive. And melatonin to some people, that's more natural, yes, but also, again, can be addict, some people believe it can be addictive. And I had a friend who actually says she felt like she was being addicted to it because she just can't function, go to sleep without it. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is just kind of like, just bring, just kind of my viewpoints, because I, I just see things, I try to understand both sides of the story, which medical marijuana, yeah, the whole word, name marijuana, the whole name marijuana, first thing comes to my mind is smoking reefer while, while listening to some psychedelic music or something in like, back in the 60s or 70s. But, but the thing is too, is sometimes it's good just to stop and sit back and just think, okay, what is all this? So, and my feeling is medically, I believe medical marijuana is a very good thing. It actually can help calm nerves, relieve anxiety, because mind you, I am a man who's, actually, you will never know, but I'm living with a small fibular neuropathy, and mind you, I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't go to, to it just because it's, because of my, how I am, but imagine somebody is on that and then they have to take a medication that it could be habit-forming, that could be abused, whether the person wants to or not at the beginning to abuse it, that's, who knows, but at the very least, I would consider even on this lightest, just trying to, let's, try to at least loosen the grip, because I do sense there's, there is a, trying to be a tight grip, like to make sure everything plays right. But sometimes too, keeping a looser grip, but while keeping an eye on things to make sure things are not going out of control. Plus also, I'm assuming anybody who wants to have like these, to be able to dispense these things, I know I've, I've been hearing special permits and stuff. One thing I'm assuming is there's got to be a background check or some kind of check for whether or not that person is a good candidate of dispensing these things. Because let me tell you, I, you hear talk around town and say, there's certain individuals I probably wouldn't even allow to have this kind of thing, but all that aside, I just, I do appreciate the chance to talk, and I'm sorry if I'm going on and on, I'm a rambler, so forgive me, but I do appreciate the chance to talk, and I hope you all have the great rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mike Marquetti, 120 Marie Avenue, resident of Southbridge. I have a couple of questions about the, the technical part of this, and then, then I do have a comment. At the planning board meeting, you had some maps, and I think the maps were incomplete because I saw there was, it said Zone 1 of 5, Zone 4, Zone 5, but there was no 2 and 3. I don't know if that was a mistake or if that's all there is, I don't know.
It was a mistake. I, I did ask going forward for, you know, if, if there is a discussion here tonight about producing a new set of maps, it will be, reflect a new series of 1, 2, and 3. It won't, you know, have any breaks in that number sequence.
All right, thank you. And I do notice that on the town's website, you have the maps on there, except that I think that it's a little mixed up because when I click on the PDF that says maps, that's the amendment. When I click on the PDF that says amendment, that's the maps, and it's the same maps that you provided, and they're very difficult to read. You have to look for the GB and the HI and the LI. Maybe you could, you know, I don't know, it's just a suggestion that maybe we could make that a little easier to read.
Yeah.
Because I had a hard time figuring out, it seems like it's, it's all over the place. You don't really know where these facilities are going. The only other thing that I thought, I think I brought up at that meeting was that I think that this time, hours of operation, I don't think you should have any hours of operation restriction like that. You should let, leave it up to the facility what hours of operations they want to have. And, and the other thing that I just wanted to say, and this is my comment, I had a family member who died of cancer, and they went through some chemotherapy, and it was a terrible thing to witness, and I wished to God at that time, and this happened several years ago, but I wished to God that I could have given this person marijuana, because I understand marijuana relieves the symptoms from chemotherapy. So for you to equate this with a seedy operation like an adult entertainment, I take a little offense to that because I can assure you, never, never equate my mother with a, an adult entertainment place. She needed something like marijuana to relieve her symptoms from chemotherapy, and that's what a medical marijuana facility is all about, to help cancer patients. I don't think you're going to have children running in there, you're going to have cancer patients going in there, so thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. Chair. I think the, the discussion regarding adult uses in comparison to medical marijuana use is not, not that analogy that we're trying to equate here. I think we are using that bylaw that was drafted for, for the adult uses, unfortunately that's the term. Those buffer zones were the numbers that the planning board at the time used as a model, and so we're, we're, we're using that as a jumping off point. I, I don't think it's the intention of the board, not my intention definitely, to equate marijuana, medical marijuana use with adult uses in town. And I, I would think that the board also agreed with me there. But, you know, I, to your point, I can see how, you know, that, that type of description can be provocative, and it's not the intention of the planning board to, to equate those types of uses together. So we'll, you know, probably be better with choosing words on how to describe these, these bylaws in the future.
Rick Nash, 50 Dennison Cross Road, speaking as a citizen, not as a town councillor. Thank you very much for the effort, for the answers, Mr. Comia, through you, Mr. Chairman. You've answered all my questions along the way, and I'm very grateful for that. I would respectfully request that you please publish the statement from Chief Shane Woodson. If it's be an email, that's fine, I'd love to have that. I wouldn't mind asking you to read it again because the way that I interpreted what you were saying was that it was fairly vague and not in strong support of any particular location, short of complying with the law, which is exactly what I would request of the planning board, to begin as the starting point for the foundation of a zoning bylaw and zoning maps. Keep it as unrestricted but within compliance, tighten it up from there. I'd echo everything that's been said here tonight because I haven't heard one person come up and provide this board with any strong support, which, with what's already been promulgated, what has already been discussed at the town council meeting and at the Planning and Development Subcommittee meetings. And I'd like to make sure that that's very clear to you, that tonight, thus far, there have been people with concerns with the way that this zoning bylaw and the maps have been created. So with that, thank you again for the effort, for volunteering your service to the community. I, I can't say that enough. I know that it's been said in other meetings, that you're all volunteers, and I'll just remind you, so are we, and we're grateful for the service that you provide to the community, especially those of you that have served for 30-plus years. Thanks.
So I will read Shane Woodson's email again. It says, "I reviewed the amendment and believe it works for this community. As we discussed after the last staff meeting, so long as there are regulations prohibiting the distance from schools, et cetera, I do not think there will be any issues. I also believe that this is similar to what other communities have done, and it has worked for them. If you need anything else, please let me know." That was Shane Woodson's email.
If I may for another second, Gus Steve, 771 Lebanon Hill again, and some of the discussion was, probably me to think of a couple of points here. I was wondering if you guys could take a look at Oxford zoning, because I... I was wondering if you guys could take a look at Oxford zoning, because I know that they, their town meeting specifically decided to reject any restrictions of recreational zoning, and they already have a medicinal facility. I think it's, if it hasn't already opened, it will be opening very soon. So it might be interesting to see a comparison of what we have with the kind of split between recreational and medicinal versus a town that has both. Also, I was wondering if it'd be possible maybe to look at some of the zones, some of the states that have done this longer, already have some experience with it, and see what kind of issues they have seen, how it works, how they've tweaked their zones. And granted, of course, like California, and I think California, Colorado, Washington, places like that have done it for a couple of years. And granted, I understand that their zoning laws would be different from ours, but I'm sure that there might be some ideas from theirs that they could borrow, that we could borrow, that we could probably fit and maybe bounce an idea off of the Attorney General or something to see how we could tweak it to make it work for us. And lastly, also, for the next part of a public hearing, would it be possible to actually get a, one of those, one of the, a map, both versions of the map, both the version that you have, that you're proposing, and also a map of, that would just have the 500-foot limits, so that we can actually see what the difference would be? And also to Ken's point mentioned a while back, as I understand it from seeing what's been going on in some of the other towns, the, in most of these towns, it's like, in our case, the council, does have to give a facility a letter of either approval or non-opposition before they can come to town. So there is a little bit of control there. I mean, there's also a control, by the way, of the fact that these facilities generally negotiate some sort of a host community agreement, which can be for finances and other areas of control. I get it, but I have not seen what one of those looks like. But there is some element of control in there that isn't quite willy-nilly. So maybe that could be one area where we can certainly look at to make sure that we do this right. Thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So when Mr. Steves presented the request to produce maps showing 500-feet buffers from all the zones, or from, instead of the 700-foot buffer from those types of facilities, 500-foot buffers, I did ask our mapping consultant to do that. I will post those maps, and the planning board can take a look at that between now and the next public hearing to maybe discuss those further. Yes, it definitely will be online, as well as Chief Woodson's email to me. That will be posted.
Okay, do you want to continue?
Yeah.
Make a motion to continue. We have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to continue this meeting until 7:15, council chambers on May the 16th. All those in favor? All right. Thank you.